Such a great job and put all their heart and soul into the host team. We're excited. We're gonna get the meeting started and then when we get to your, you know, your section, we'll have Amanda and Shannon come up, okay? All right, so the first item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three is our prayer and pledge. If everyone would stand for that, please. Vice Mayor Butler?
Lord, we're in meeting today to commit matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
And now we'll have our pledge, okay? I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is mayor's comments. I really like that pledge, everybody. I need y'all to come out and help us lead the pledge every, every meeting, okay? So, all right. So, we want to welcome everyone here tonight. This is an exciting night having all of you out here, the teams, the coaches, the parents, everyone who volunteered. It was a great series. All of us were there every single day and, you know, a lot of volunteers and, and our, what, what I heard from the people who visited is what a wonderful community we have and how everybody welcomed them and they just, they felt so welcomed into our community. Matter of fact, several of them said they'd like to move here. So, you know, that's real exciting. The girls, y'all played so hard. We had a World Series champion, we had runner-ups, we had exciting plays and y'all just played with heart. And being the host team, I know that people were probably underestimating you, but girls, you showed them, didn't you? You did a great job. All right. So, yes.[157.22][157.22](APPLAUSE) All right, so, everyone, please speak into your mics because I know everyone at home wants to hear what everybody has to say tonight. And we will get started with our meeting. Before the approval of the agenda, I would like to add Resolution 39-24 as Item C, 11C on our agenda. Mr. Greer, would you like to speak about that?
This resolution provides the mayor to sign the subdivision development agreement for the Richville Phase 5 development. Richville is a pod and they are ready to get going on Phase 5. Our city engineer has been out sick and missed the deadline to get the resolution put on tonight's agenda and has asked for the board to place it on the agenda for tonight.
Mayor, if I could, I'd move for approval of the agenda with the addition of 11C, Resolution 39-24.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item five passes 5-0. Item six, do we have any citizens' comments tonight?
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognition. Item A is city events.
Thank you, Mayor Board. Our next event is Nature Fest, which will be September 21st at the park. If you are still, if you're interested in being a sponsor or being a participant in that event, we have a few spots available. Contact Richard Ross here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And the moment you've all been waiting for, girls. Okay, item 7B is recognition. There you are. Cool. All right. Recognition of the Diamond Youth Softball World Series. I'm gonna ask that Amanda and Shannon come up. And yes, everybody can see all the teams on the big screen. And what we're gonna do is Shannon is gonna tell a little bit about what happened this, the week of the World Series and also then we'll call you up by teams. We're gonna get pictures of the teams with all of us when he calls you up, okay?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I would like to say thank you to the city. I know that the mayor and all the Commissioners, I saw everyone there that, you know, supporting this event, not only last year when we had the Dixie Softball World Series, but this year with the Diamond Youth Softball World Series. You know, last year, we, we did this thing. It was an idea. We thought maybe we could pull it off to have a big tournament at the park. And we thought, okay, great, we'll have 22 teams, 22 teams come from all over the southeast to participate in two age divisions last year. And at the end of that, we had put so much time and effort into it over the year and a half leading up to that, that when it was over, Amanda and I looked at each other and said, well, what do we do now? We don't have anything else to do. Softball season's over. We've had this big tournament. What's next? Well, it just so happened that a new sanction started this past offseason called Diamond Youth Softball. And we transitioned to that sanction as a board, the Fairview Recreation Association. And we decided that when they asked if anyone was interested in hosting the inaugural World Series for that sanction, that we would say we could do it. Well, 53 teams, 53 teams this year came to participate in the inaugural Diamond Youth Softball World Series. Five teams from Fairview, from 6U, 8U, 10U, 12U, 15U, and then one team from Dixon in the 18U because Fairview didn't have a team. We hosted at two parks here in Fairview using all four fields. And Dixon was nice enough to let us use two fields at Buckner Park for the first three days so we'd accomplish this, this tournament. The issue with that was, is now instead of having a group of individuals at one site with four fields, we had to divide and conquer at two sites in two different cities. And it was no small task to accomplish this. Amanda and her team, the committee, and I'm gonna call out various, I'm not gonna call it individuals by name, but if you're in one of these groups of individuals, if you would just stand up so that we can acknowledge you. Amanda had a committee that she put together last year for the World Series. All of those folks came back this year for the World Series and they worked tirelessly. I know you see their shirts that say Team No Sleep. Literally, for the weeks leading up to this, that is the truth. They did not sleep. I slept, they did not sleep. I don't know when Amanda came to bed at night, but I did not see her for two to three weeks leading up to this event. So, if you were on the committee for the World Series, if you would just stand up, I think most of them may be standing. Thank y'all.[519.02][519.02](APPLAUSE) Amanda made me put together a list because inevitably I will forget some group of individuals that I should acknowledge. We had gate workers. First Bank for two years in a row has worked our gate. That is no easy task.[540.41][540.41](APPLAUSE) These, these people, these people are asking for money from these, from these individuals that are coming in. And a lot of times, they're not very happy when they're asked for money. And they take the brunt of all of that for two years in a row. We can't thank First Bank and any other individual that worked the gate enough. The, we had concessions workers. I know the Flex Travel Ball Team, their organization worked, worked the concession stand for us. I don't know if any of those folks are here, but if you're with Flex and worked concessions, if you would just stand. I don't see anybody here. Field guys. We had four, four fields that were going pretty much non-stop. These guys were there.[589.12][589.12](LAUGHTER) That's, that's the Energizer Bunny right there, man. He, he does not, does not quit. I mean, he was there in the morning when, when Amanda got there. I say Amanda because I wasn't there yet. Five o'clock in the morning and he was there at two, three o'clock the next morning getting these fields ready with, with others. I know there were a few others that were helping you. But the field guys had to get these fields ready before we played on them, but then also in between each game. So, you can imagine with 53 teams, four fields, how much work that they had to put in to do that. Again, I've already recognized Dixon. Again, we couldn't have, we couldn't have pulled this off with just four fields. I see Toby Vernon with their, their organization back there. Thank you guys for all the work that you did.[638.54][638.54](APPLAUSE) Announcers and scorekeepers. These, these folks are the hit of every tournament that we've ever put on. I know Don Buffalini's not here tonight and some of the others that did the announcing and scorekeeping, but man, they do a really, really good job. Commissioner, Commissioner Vice Mayor Butler, one of our scorekeepers, did a great job. And anybody else that kept score, they're here. If you're here, if you'll just stand up or announce. I don't see anybody. We had a group of kids that, that handled park maintenance, I guess if you will, getting trash to the, to the trash bin. Again, without that group of kids, we would've had a really, really dirty place with four fields going. So, if you were on the trash pickup crew, if you'd stand up. I don't see anybody here. He was the champ. We really appreciate those folks. Sponsors. We had several corporate sponsors. This year, we, we had a, a main sponsor for each of the four fields. Commissioner Butler's Real Estate Group was one of those sponsors. Thrivant Financial Canos, and then Darryl Hollers, your, your real estate. Who else? And Macy, that's right, Macy Lehman. Darryl Hollers and Macy Lehman. So, we appreciate you guys. There were many others. But thank y'all. Let's give them a round of applause.[733.94][733.94](APPLAUSE) The, we had, we had host families. We try to have a host family for each team that was coming in from, from out of state or otherwise, that would be just a liaison, a point of contact for these teams that had no idea where Fairview, Tennessee was before they realized that there was a World Series here. And if you were one of those host families, if you would just stand so we can recognize you. I know some of you are here. You're already standing, but we appreciate you guys for doing what, what you did with that. Thank you. The, the high school, we was able to use, Williams County Schools allowed us to use the high school to, to do the opening ceremonies, the football field, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium. That was no small feat to get, to get that going and to plan for that. And a lot of people were involved in that. And we appreciate anybody that was involved in working the opening ceremonies. With that said, I'm gonna say a couple more things and then we'll introduce the teams. I know a lot of us are, are from Fairview originally and I, I grew up in Fairview, played ball in Fairview from the time I was as little as these girls sitting on the front row until I was grown. And I don't remember us having any state champions that played in either softball or baseball when I was growing up. Kelly's been around a few years more than me even. We have now had a World Series champion two years ago, three years ago? Three years ago in softball in the 8U division. We have now, we now have a World Series champion in 6U softball right here in Fairview this year. We have, we had a 10U runner-up last year. And we've had two runners-up this year, the 8U division and the 15U division. I think that says a lot about where Fairview softball and sports in general, youth sports in general, has been and where we are now with all the work that all of these folks have put in. So, if we can just give a round of applause for that. These, the coaches, I recognize the amount of time and effort that it takes to get prepared for one of these tournaments. The work that goes in for you, the work that goes in from the girls, and the dedication from the parents to get the kids to and from practices, to and from games, sometimes not here locally, sometimes in other places, so that we can be competitive. And I hope that this is just a sign of, of things to come. Yes, we've hosted a World Series the past two years, but we want to see softball continue to grow and us go to the World Series in other locations. I know next year it's in Louisiana. Us send teams to those, to those World Series and compete there as well. And that's what the goal is for our program. This, this event generated about $155,000 in revenue for our program. That's a big number.[944.54][944.54](APPLAUSE) After, after paying expenses, we expect that we will have made $50,000 to $60,000, which is gonna get pumped right back in to our park. I know there's things that happen in our park that sometimes maybe you don't see if you're not there every day, but it costs about $15,000 to resurface those fields. We've done that three years, every, about every three years, we've resurfaced those fields. We've bought new batting cage, but equipment, netting, matting, other things for the cages. And we have big plans for what we envision, we being the FRA, for our park in the future. And without hosting events like this, it wouldn't be possible. There's no other fundraising that's better than a tournament. And that, that's a lot of money for us to have raised over, I say a five-day period, but it really was much more than that because of the other, all the individuals that were involved in getting it off the ground. But over a five-day period, that's what we, that's what we earned. So, without further ado, I want to recognize the teams. Now, we're gonna, not gonna call you out individually, but we'll call you out by team and come up and get your picture made. First, the...
Rachel. Sorry, go ahead. All right.
All right, next, we have a, a team that was coached, and I know this is gonna break his heart because he really wanted to be the Hollers that won the World Series. And Darryl beat him to it. So, Kelly Hollers coached our U8 team and they were runner-up.[1107.94][1107.94](CHEERS) All right, the U15 division was coached by me and they were runners-up as well.[1246.16][1246.16](CHEERS) Again, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come out tonight. We appreciate that we get to recognize all these wonderful kiddos and the coaches and the parents that made the tournament a success. And we look forward to seeing you next year.[1335.16][1335.16](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. We're so privileged to have the opportunity to acknowledge accomplishments of our children in Fairview. What, while I have a bunch of you here, I would just like to say, we want to keep doing this, so please spread the word. If there are other teams, high school, middle school, elementary, whether it be academics or sports, please let me know so that we can, you know, celebrate the accomplishments of our children. They're our future. And I, I think that we're all excited with every accomplishment that they have. So, now, if you'd like to stay for the rest of our board meeting, you're welcome to. Or, we're gonna let y'all go ahead and, yes. Oh, I'm supposed to tell you, there are shirts on the bench. While the, while the children and families are exiting the building, y'all can move back up front. If anyone wants to move back up front, they can. 8:15.
Hey, Emery could push him just 10 feet when you shut the door.
Sure they'll be behind, right?
I think though, I... All right, the moment we've all been waiting for. Item 7C, recognition. Keith Paisley, 25 years of employment with the city of Fairview.
Well, first off, it's been a...
I can't hear you.
Sure you can. It's been a very great experience. I mean, there's been turbulence along the way.
I can't hear you. Turn him up. We want to hear what you have to say because...
I just...
You're always so humble. We want to hear what you have to say.
Yeah. I want to thank everybody. The experience has been really good. Some turbulence along the way, but we made it through it. And I want to thank my wife for encouraging me 25 years ago to fill out an application. Gone through a few city managers, a few mayors and commissioners, and I appreciate all the support you guys give me. I want to thank my staff, current and past, and my current director that hired me, Wade Hooper, Melissa Bell. And it's just been a great experience. I want to thank you all.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Okay, so, let's all just, you know, whoever wants to say something about Keith, let's just, you know?
They're all be good.
When I was just...
I'll go, I'll, if I can.
Go ahead, absolutely.
Keith, you, you were here a year before I started. If you started in 99, I was first elected in 2000. And I enjoyed working with you those 16 straight years that I was involved with the city. You took top-notch care of the park and every other endeavor that you were shifted to along the way, and I really appreciate that.
I'll go back a little longer. I was here before you were, thank goodness. You've always done everything that was needed to do. You've done from yard cutting to anything that was ever asked of you. You attempted to, to do a good job with it. And I've always treasured your friendship. You attempted to do a good job with it, and I've always treasured your friendship. You are treasured for this city, and you do take care of our park, and I really enjoy you taking care of our greatest asset. Thank you, Keith.
I would like to say that when I first came in as Finance Director, Keith was one of the very supportive individuals, and he kept saying, "It will get better," or "it won't." But he, but it just keeps going. So he's very steady, steadfast, you know, stay-the-course type individual. I love the U.S. Marine Corps tattoo on his arm. I like his demeanor, and he's excellent for the park. But what a lot of people don't know is Keith has a lot of public works experience, and he has a lot of any time, I would say, between, if I couldn't get an answer out of Todd, Keith would probably know where a gas line is or where a utility line is, or if there's anything here at City Hall, Keith has probably at one point dealt with, whether it be the geothermal AC unit, or where is the, what is it that I always ask you for? How do you, the power that you cut off for to get to work on something? Because he just knows where everything is in this building. So it's a good asset to have, and I've enjoyed my time here with Keith. Thank you.
Keith, I've only been here a year and a half and haven't known you as long as nearly everyone else, but when I first started, I came into lots of controversial items that needed to be addressed right away, and you always greeted me with, and you still do, with a big, kind smile, and I appreciate that. That gave me a lot of confidence when I didn't know anybody here, so thank you.
Keith, your passion and commitment to Fairview shines, and you are truly an asset to us. You've worn many hats. I don't think there's, like Tom said, there's no task that you haven't been afraid to accomplish, and so we appreciate you always being here for us and for the city. Thank you.
I'll just add, along with Mr. Carter, haven't known you a long time, a few years longer than that, but completely agree. Every time I've had an interaction with you, it's been pleasant, and you've always been as forthcoming as you can with any information that I've ever asked of you, so thank you for your service and continue to. Thank you.
Keith, thank you for your service in the military and also your service to our city. Our park, which is our greatest asset and jewel, you're the overseer of that, and I know that we can all agree that, we know that it's protected with you out there. I've been on many trips around the park with you, looking at different situations, and, you know, from storms to just, you know, when we're about to have events and stuff like that, and you're always so conscientious to make sure that everything gets taken care of, and the trails, when this last storm happened, and you made sure that all the trees got moved and cut as quickly as possible, and any storm, water issue, you're always on top of it, and none of that goes unnoticed. You're just a gentle spirit, and you're always so humble, and you never, you never want to be in the limelight, but, and I know, I know, I know that, and, but, you know, you need to let us celebrate you, because 25 years anywhere, you know, and especially through all of the city managers you've had to endure, and all of the, you know, the staff, different staff and different boards, it's just, you know, to stay the course and to just straight ahead and just keep doing what you do, that makes it special. You just have always done that, and as long as I've known you, it's just been a privilege. So I appreciate everything you've done, and we're excited to celebrate your 25 years with you. So I'm going to present Keith with a plaque, and what we need to do, since it's not a team of girls, we probably should go down forward and get a picture with Keith, and we do have some refreshments after the meeting, if anybody would like to stay and just, you know, help us celebrate Keith some more. Probably recorded more meetings than any of us. Yeah. Okay, item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports, a community services report.
Thank you, Mayor. Our community services report, our public service group has been out doing right-of-way mowing. They've also continued their chipper service throughout the month. For our planning, codes, and engineering department, I did miss the second meeting of last month, so our June residential building permits issued, we issued 11 permits in June, and then for July, we issued 10 residential building permits. Through July 31st of 2024, we have issued 96 new construction residential building permits. In July, we completed 246 building inspections. That brings us through July 31st this year, we've completed 1,229 building inspections. And then I've received several questions from citizens about how many units are approved and what developments are approved, and I've provided for you tonight a document from our office showing each development that we have on record of being approved, the year of approval, the zoning district of that development, the acreage of that development, their approved units and approved units per acre, and then the last three columns show the remainder of the development that needs to be permitted. So, for example, the top item on that list is Bell Haven. It has 483 approved units, and the columns to the right have 337 single-family unbuilt because those have not been permitted, and 146 unbuilt townhomes, which have not been permitted either. So as you receive questions at town halls or phone calls from citizens throughout the weeks, I would like y'all to have the most accurate information and make sure that most of you have a pretty good idea of what we have, but that's an official document from our office that y'all can reference. Do you have any questions?
So, when people talk about the highest-density development that Fairview's ever seen, that would be Bell Haven at 483 rooftops. Is that correct?
We refer to density as units per acre, and so on this list, Columbus Cove at 9.85 units per acre, it's zoned RM12, zoning for 12 units per acre, so they're under their designation in their zoning district, but they are the highest-density development.
But as far as rooftops, it would be 483 with Bell Haven.
That is the largest development. I would not say it's the most dense.
Does anybody else have, any of the other commissioners have anything for Ethan?
I just want to thank him for the list.
You know what, I really appreciate that, too. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
All right, item 8B, Police Department Report.
Mayor, if I may, for any citizen that's listening, if you would like this list, you may submit a records request to Ms. Rachel Jones at City Hall, and we will provide the document for you as well.
So let me ask a question. If, since we already have this document, if somebody wanted to see it, we can't do that, we have to go through Rachel?
It is a public record. It's a document that exists in our government, it is a public record. Mr. Carter?
Sir, any reason why it shouldn't be posted on the website?
I have no reason that it could not be posted.
I would think that's the kind of information that you want citizens to have.
Yeah, because I know, after they know we have it, they're going to ask for it, so thank you for...
I think by, you're going to have an awful lot of public records requests, and you're going to be doing nothing but public records requests, so it might make it easier for you just to put it on the website.
We can get that done.
Okay. Is that all?
That's it.
Thank you. Chief Humphries?
Before I get started, I do want to congratulate Keith. As Department Head, it's been wonderful working with him. He's always accommodating, helpful, and kind, and he's been a real asset to us anything we've ever needed also, so congratulations to him. For our monthly report, our staffing for the month increased, and that was some of that budgetary movements for this year. We were able to get up to 29. We will see that at 31 next month's reporting. The only problem with that is, is eight of those are uncertified. They're going through the process of their field training, and the academy, there's some lag time in the academy. We're probably getting some of those in in January of next year and March of next year that we've already hired, so it will be some time before we recognize those officers on the street, and those state mandates of those certification requirements, but we're working through that right now, so we'll see that. Overtime was surprisingly at 7.5 hours, and that was our July 3rd event was included in that, so shout out to our sergeants who managed through their staffing to not load us up with overtime for that and still accomplish that goal, so they did a good job in that. And we really turned it back up for training for the month with 634 hours, and you see the list to the right there, just a whole host of things that we covered for the month. It was a good training month. Next slide. On the calls for service and self-initiated activity, again, a spike there from 865 up to 987. A lot of that has to do with some proactive approaches, those new trainees out on the road, those officers, they're trying to get as much proactive time as they can to show those new trainees that, so that reflects in that report. Next slide. Arrests were up just a little bit, 74 domestics at, down to one, D-Rise up to one, drug charges down a little bit, zero thefts for the month. Again, you'll see reflected citations, that's a proactive approach, those new trainees out there on the street with their FTO, out there trying to slow that traffic down and stuff, you'll see that citation level spike a little bit during those times. Traffic accidents at 21, property damage 18, three injuries, and again, so happy to report every month, we've no fatalities here. And then the last is our, to report on public relations, the July 3rd event, we were able to raise $6,142 for the shop with a cop. Our goal over the years used to be 10,000, it's increased to 15, and so that represents a large portion of that goal. You'll see us at events, Nature Fest, things like that, anytime that you see a police department concession stand, 100% of those proceeds are going to shop with a cop. We do all that for that yearly event, so those funds are for that. And that's all I have. Anything? Any questions?
Thank you for your good report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8C, Fire Department Report.
Everyone, got me again instead of Chief Hughes tonight, but I'm always happy to see you. I also want to thank Keith for his years of service. I've been at the station over there for 14 years now, and we've been neighbors with the park, and he just, we see everything he does, and being right there and how much work he does, it's a lot, doesn't go unnoticed by us, so thank you, Keith. For the month, we had a total of 148 calls, which was up 20 calls over the previous month, and 22 calls over the same month last year, so we're definitely getting busier. 31 of those calls were overlapping incidents, which is, again, where we have a truck out and we get toned out on another call, so we have multiple, two calls going on at the same time. Three incidents where fires were extinguished, two of them were structured fires in the county, and one grass fire in the county, luckily none in the city, which is a good, good report. At the July 3rd event, we treated 10 that treated and refused and one transport, so we did nine automatic mutual aid calls with the surrounding districts. Our response time was up a bit, 5 minutes 44 seconds on the average response, and then an average operating scene time of 25 minutes, right at 26 minutes, so scenes were a little longer, a little more complicated, the response, we were pretty busy with all that, so. Next slide. The call breakdown, again, fire, rescue and emergency medical calls, 74% of the calls, that's still right in the nationwide trend. Overall, the three fires, there were a couple hazardous condition calls where there may have been like, it was gas leak or another incident that didn't spark a fire but was a hazardous condition, so, but 148 calls for the month. The picture actually up on the left was, that was a gas leak. We were on one of the construction crews that accidentally hit one of the lines, so, but it was pretty easily mitigated, so. Next slide, the heat map, it's always the same, where our populations are, so. Fire prevention activities, I did 25 life safety inspections and follow-ups, I only had to do a few minor corrective action notices. I did, I had five sets of plans come in to be reviewed. On July 3rd, I did seven inspections for the food trucks that came in to ensure safety, and so all that went pretty smooth. Again, if anybody needs smoke alarms installed in their homes, please contact us. We, the state has a really good program, they supply them to us, we can come out and put them in. It's actually become one of my more, or one of my favorite things to do, is just to get out there and put smoke alarms in for people, so feel free to contact us if you need them. Training, we're going to have to step up because PD beat us by seven hours on training, so they did 634, and we did 627, so I'll have to talk to Jake Warren about that, but overall, a lot of training, a lot of good training. The pictures there are showing where we're doing emergency bailout training, if we had to evacuate a floor or a hazardous condition really quick, we were, we were learning how to dive out of the windows from the second floor, so. Good breakdown of training. We conducted a hiring, interviews for a hiring in July. We had a really large turnout of applicants, which is more than we've ever had, more than I remember in the last 15 years. We had over 20 apply, we invited 20 to come test, 14 of the candidates passed the test, and then we hired three, and their start date is actually this coming Monday, you'll start seeing them on, so, pretty exciting. And, next slide. I think that's, that was it, that's all I got. Any questions for me? All right, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you for your report, and you were going to find out about the Commissioner camp.
Yes, I did, and I went back and I told Training Officer Warren and Chief Hughes, and they are supposed to be working on putting that together. They, I think they wanted to wait till some of the heat was gone and it was a little more comfortable outside, so.
Especially with the gear we have to put on, because it's hot.
Yeah, it's hot, so, all right.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I did want to say, and please pass it on to all the firemen who came out, and we had this topping, and I don't know what it's called, but it was brought out, like I think Kelly said, $15,000 worth of, it's the infield for all of the different diamonds at the baseball park, softball park, and we had to keep that wet because it clumps up and it blows really easily, so I'd like for you to make sure to thank them for coming out and wetting our fields.
I will, yeah, for sure. I'll tell the crews that came out to wet it down.
In the evening. In the evenings so that we could keep that managed. So, thank you. Item 8D is Finance Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you. In your packet, you should have three reports. One is your Board of Commissioners' expenditure detail, and this is for the month of July. And then your next report is a finance summary with revenue detail and expenditure totals for the departments. And then the last report is the account balances as of July 31. And as always, I'm always available to go over any of the finances. We did see some upticks in a few line items on the revenue side, but looking forward to seeing how, how the revenue flows in the next few months. Thank you.
Any questions of our city manager? Item 8E is City Manager Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you. We received a final election applicant from Chad Gray today, and I just wanted to announce the folks that'll be running. We have Don Bufalini, Stuart Johnson, Jeffrey Pape and Carolyn Roberts. So, we have, I just wanted to put that out there. Now, I think, I think candidates have to August 22 to withdraw, but as of right now, everything is in, and those are the four that the community will have the opportunity to vote for. With that being said, I've been thinking, I've been in contact with MTS, seeing what they recommend on, you know, any, any training available. And there's going to be, it's, they've got two different type things, and I'm going to try to utilize both. But one is, is kind of an overall elected officials academy. Just wanted to know you've got training in your, in your budget line item that, you know, if you want to go, all these are virtual, virtual classes. And then I'm also going to try to have them come out for about a three-day, three to five-day that zones in more towards us, the, as far as our charter, our form of government, how it kind of works. I know, I know it can be kind of overwhelming when you first get in here and you look at, you know, you have four different charters that cities can be in and different, different ways, different forms of government work. So, just try to give everybody a good start on kind of getting an idea of what, what our roles are and what our responsibilities are. Also, we have the audit coming in on, on the last week of August, and I want to give a kudos to our finance director. He, his first week was, I think he got hired on April 8. And so, I pretty much handled everything on the audit, but he's, he's taken the horns on everything so far this year, and I'm sure I'll get to participate, but it's been kind of nice. Also, if I can read my writing. Oh, yeah. And I'm sure, Mayor, you're going to announce this as well, but we have town hall on the 29th. And that concludes my city manager report. Thank you.
Any questions of?
Thank you, Tom. It was a good report.
Item 9 is Consent Agenda. A, Minutes from August 1, 2024, Board of Commissioner Work Session. And Item B, Minutes from August 1, 2024, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9A and B passes 5-0. Item T10 is Old Business, and we have none tonight. Item 11, New Business. Item 11A, Ordinance 2024-15, and ordinance adopting and enacting a codification and revision of the ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. City Manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you. This is another matching grant for equipment for the fire department.
Move for approval. Second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rachel. I got ahead of myself. This is, I've got quite a few notes that I can go through if we need to, but this is a project we've been working on for over a year and a half that we finally got as close to correct as we feel we possibly can. And we just asked that the board approve our changes and updates to our municipal code.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Mayor, could we, Patrick, did you draft this?
No, I didn't draft this, but one of the very first things I did when I started was Tom gave me a box of all of your ordinances that hadn't been codified in quite some time. And so, I've been through it multiple times, and I know staff has, other staff has been through it. I know that you all, I think, did the same thing and were given copies along the way. So, I think we're, and I think we're in good shape. Yeah, as good as, as good as it ever is until next time, I guess, is what I'd say. We've done this in Spring Hill, and it stays, it's nice when it's done, but then as soon as we start, you know, the next meeting, we pass more ordinances, it's out of date again. But this will be a significant improvement on what you have. And I was just whispering to Tom that, you know, when it's finally published, I want a copy of it because it will make my job so much easier. So, and your job's easier, too, because you'll be able to find, you'll be able to find our ordinances much easier than we can now.
And Rachel provided a, pretty much a pretty good rundown of our process if y'all would like to hear it. I just didn't know if y'all want to hear me read.
Well, Mayor, if we, if we have, if you think we have time, I just think the public at home probably wants to know what we're voting on. I think it's a good idea.
MTS sent a model policy along with in-house review and attorney review. The model policies included best practices and are up to date to current laws. So, what that means is with every, every code that we had that we felt was subject, we, and we had it looked at by the department head and our attorney, we went with the best practice of MTS. Then Rachel and I met with Chuck Downham of MTS and completed our in-house review. Patrick completed the attorney review. All department heads reviewed their sections of the code and submitted changes. All reviews and changes were sent back to MTS, and then MTS sent back the first revision. The revision was again sent to department heads for review, and the BLC was given a month's review and submitted any suggestions. All changes were sent to MTS. MTS sent a second revision. The second revision was reviewed and needed a few minor corrections. Corrections were sent to MTS. MTS sent third and final revision, which is what is in front of you tonight. This revision includes all ordinances that have been passed up to this point. After passage of the first reading tonight, there will be a public hearing and a second reading on September 19. After that, we will begin to follow the newly adopted code, and any changes made to the code will be done by ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A passes 5-0. Item 11B, Resolution 38-24, a resolution authorizing the city of Fairview Fire Department to participate in the property conservation matching grant program. Sean, are you going to talk about that tonight?
It's, it's a matching grant that will allow us to buy some lighting for the training tower that we're going to put up there. It'll help keep that area lit and keep, it also act as a deterrent for unauthorized people that come back, try, might try and come back there at night. If it's awarded, I think it's a $2,000 grant that we'll be responsible for $1,000 of. But it's overall, just also will give us the ability to do some nighttime training back there.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 11C, Resolution 39-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Richville Phase 5. I do want to point out, this has already been approved.
The site development agreement for Richville Phase 5 has been signed by the developer. The city engineer worked to establish bond amounts. The reclamation bond amount is $992,000, and $992,938. And the performance bond for the site is $1,900,037.
Move for approval.
Any questions? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 12, Round Table, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner McDonald?
Just, congratulations again to Keith. Congratulations to all the girls that were recognized tonight and all of everybody who was involved in putting that on. It sounds like it was an overwhelming success and great for the city. Hopefully, Fairview football's doing okay and looking forward to the football season. Glad it's here. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, first off, thank all the employees, and I know some days it's just tough, but at the end of the day, y'all do such a great job. It should have a real reward at working for the city of Fairview because I don't, I think this autotune being filled up tonight, the way it was, I think is indications of what we're up against as far as this city goes. This is a fantastic place to be and live, and I want to thank y'all for all the work y'all do to help bring that all together. I want to thank Detective Reed the other day for his speech over at the Apex Bank. Had done a good job, and anybody that can stand up without a podium in the middle of a room full of people, it's got to have a little bit of guts. Thank you, Keith. Done a great job. Also, Keith Paisley, you've been a blessing to work with through the years, and I've just tickled to death that you've made it 25 years and hope you made it 125 more. Thank you so much. Anyway, I just want to thank all the people that was involved with this World Series. The one thing that I noticed, other than the hard play that the girls did and, you know, the enthusiasm that they had, I believe, I look for sportsmanship, and that's what I seen there. There was superior sportsmanship with all the teams that came in here, as well as all of our teams. I did not see one argument in all the days that I was out there. I wasn't there for every, every game, but I was there for quite a few. But the sportsmanship is what brings sports together and what creates the future of their thought process in the futures, in the days to come. Here again, thanks for the board and thanks for everybody that helps put the city together. And I want to thank Mr. Carter tonight for putting this on the website. It was a good thought on that, Mr. Carter. I think that'd be a good thing to have done. Thank y'all so much.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, again, I'd like to thank you for your 25 years of service to the city. Don't know how much longer you're staying, but I hope you get to stay as long as you want to. And I would like to thank my daughter for getting here at 5:45 this evening, and she was the first player here, and she's going to be the last one to leave. So, I'm quite certain she's ready to get home. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further tonight.
Okay, I'll make this quick because we have seven minutes until our Fairview football starts. So, congratulations again to Keith. You know how I feel about you. I'm so excited. I know I've had a little opportunity to spend time with Ben, and he's doing such a great job. So, I'm, I'm just really excited that that, that was a good, a good hire and just excited that he's our CFMO with Tom's oversight. We do have a town hall, August 29th, and I just want everybody to know it's from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. So, encourage everyone to come and just have a laid-back question and answer session where we can just kind of, you know, answer questions and, and just let people know what's going on in the community. I'm excited about our new hires for police and fire. Get, I'm excited to be able to meet them, so we'll keep watching for that. And thank you, Ethan, for putting this together. I know we get asked about this a lot, about the construction projects new and things that are going on. So, I know that people will be excited to see that. Thank you to our staff and our board and our police and fire and everyone involved in the city of Fairview. People tell me all the time how well it, how well it's going right now and how much they appreciate our staff and everyone involved right now. As I always say, let's keep Fairview beautiful and let's pick up and not throw out trash. Entertain a motion to adjourn.